Good morning. It's nine o'clock. A meeting is called to order. The first item on the agenda is a invocation. Would you please rise? Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we come once again giving you praises and thanking you, Father. Thank you for another day, another opportunity to be of service to this community. Father, we ask in the name of Jesus that you lead us and guide us in the way that we should go and that as we take care of this business and this meeting today, that it be done in a decent and orderly manner. Father, we also ask that you protect our troops wherever they are around the world and see that they might return home safely. Father, we ask to bless upon this council here. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all join me to pledge allegiance to this great nation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance?
Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank y'all very much. This morning, Bob, we have any special presentations?
Good morning. We're going to celebrate the anniversary of Jeff Young for five years with the county.
Okay, the next item in special presentations is a proclamation. And Jeff, would you read the proclamation, please?
Whereas Ruth Place is a nonprofit charitable organization which makes basic medical and dental services beyond the reach of limited income families available to nearly 1,900 Hood County citizens at no cost and anticipates more than 2,000 office visits in the coming year. And whereas its outreach center in Oak Trail Shores community, Ruth Place provides a weekly food clinic, pantry, car clinic, English as a second language class, and other social services. And whereas Hood County's growing population makes additional floor space a priority need, and whereas Ruth Place was awarded the Mueller Incorporated Helping Hand Award, a new Mueller Steel Building to deserving Texas nonprofit organizations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas does hereby proclaim that the new Ruth Place building be dedicated on Thursday, October 9th, 2014, and joins in honoring Ruth Place as the sixth recipient award by the Mueller Helping Hand Project. An eye clinic, four new exam rooms, a pharmacy, lab, education room, warehouse, and an office are planned for the new building. Recognition and thanks go to Mueller Incorporated, a Texas-based company who strongly believes in giving a helping hand to organizations which make a valuable contribution and impact in the community. Commendations to Bob Phillips, the Texas Country Reporter, for sharing the efforts of Ruth Place and other organizations working to serve their citizens. Texas Country Reporter will air Ruth Place Helping Hand Project during the Thanksgiving week as a kickoff to the Giving season. In witness thereof on this 23rd day of September, 2014, signed, Judge Darryl Cochran and County Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Jeff. You know, this is a really good deal for the county and for the indigent folks of the county, so I'll entertain a motion to approve this proclamation.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? The motion carried. Thank y'all very much. Does any citizen wish to make any comments about the, any agenda item? If so, would they please raise your hand? And Captain Smith has a form for you. Anybody? Okay, here and none. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Berry.
To approve the consent agenda. Does any further discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next on the agenda is miscellaneous economic development.
No, no.
Nope. What did I miss? Oh, road divisions. Yes, I'm sorry. Maybe if I'd get here a little earlier, it would be all right.
Good morning, Judge Cochran, Commissioners. I bring for you to die this evening or this morning the certification for the county road mileage that's maintained in Hood County. As of July 31st of this year, Hood County maintains 449 and four tenths of a mile. From August 1st of 2013 through July of this year, the county has accepted two and two tenths of miles on the county road system. You also have in your packet a percentage of paved roads. I'll tell you today that we got 99 and three quarters of percent, or 0.75% of our roads are paved in the county. Road operations recommends approving the certification for the road mileage.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the certification for the county maintained road mileage for Hood County as of July 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion?
I'd like to say one thing on this court. Previous court, there's not very many counties west of us that has this many roads paved, 99.74. Don has done an excellent job keeping up with the roads and the court, this present court and previous court has done a well, job well done on doing this.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
I can attest from going to various conventions when you talk to other counties, we are blessed in that respect to have, you know, nearly all of our roads paved.
Yeah, most of them are gravelled or...
Yes.
Unimproved.
Yep.
All right, have the motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye opposed? The motion carried.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Next is budget and finance.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. There are several budget amendments I'd like to present for your consideration. The Sheriff's Department is running short of budget for fuel and for housing out-of-county inmates, and he has plenty of money in his other line items to cover those. For housing out of county, coming from groceries, there would be $11,000, and from supplies, And then also for increasing fuel because his fuel budget is running low, that would come from contract services, medical expense, and advertising, a total of $11,000. And then in animal control fuel, coming from vet services and foods, that is $1,700 for There was a repair that came up, the fire marshal needed to take care of, so we're requesting your permission to move $6,000 for that purpose within the 543 department for the volunteer fire departments. The county has had some good experience this year as it relates specifically to the contingency line items and also several insurance line items. And we have a rare opportunity to move some of this money over into the Equipment Fund 55 and preserve that, and that would be in addition to the amount that you approved in next year's budget to go from fund balance. But this would amount to $340,000 that can be moved over to the Equipment Fund 55, and it's coming from contingency lines, workers' comp lines, unemployment, health insurance, I mean, risk insurance, that is. We also spent less on postage, and so that is the, those are the budget amendments we're requesting for this current year, which will come to an end at the end of this month. And then for next year's budget, the purchasing agent has provided a list of open purchase orders that are not likely to be received or completed by September 30th. And in order to avoid burdening next year's budget for those purchase orders that have been issued against this year's available budget, what we would like for the court to do is to formally encumber this year's budget for these items and then add that to next year's budget. There are several items on the list that have been received. One is the $31,579 to the Sheriff's Office. That's for the EOC furniture. And then Fire Marshal has received $1,200. That was a payment to an individual. Constable Ford has received certain small orders for uniforms. And to the extent we actually do receive these items by September 30th, we would just pay them as accounts payable against the current year, and we would not have to carry them over. But I'd be glad to discuss with you anything on this list, but that's what we do recommend, is that you formally encumber those open purchase orders in particular and allow us to add that to next year's budget.
Does anybody have any questions for Stan on these items that he's discussed, the line item amendments and the encumbrance? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget line item amendments.
And the encumbrance.
And the encumbrance.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan to approve the budget line item amendments and the encumbrance. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carried. Consider payment of bills.
Judge and Commissioners, the bills for your consideration come to a total of $997,476.88. Among those, there is $14,768.29 for jail groceries to Ben E. Keith Company, $10,250.54 to Charter Communications for telecommunications and data transfer services, $32,731.62 to Heartland Asphalt for road materials. There's a quarterly payment to the Hood County Appraisal District, $142,640.25 for their services for tax appraisal and collection. Payment to J.P. Morgan Chase Bank in a, that is $12,199.33 representing credit card purchases. And then for records preservation, $97,000 payable to Co-File Preservations, to MGM Landscape Services, $27,849.37 for contract mowing. And then there's an annual payment to the Regional Public Defender Organization in Lubbock for their representation for the coming year on capital murder trials only, $13,111. To Simmons Law Enforcement for Sheriff's Department Body Armor, $12,855. To Texas Association of Counties, $40,009.50, that's to the risk insurance pool. As mentioned earlier, $31,579 is to be paid to Texas Correctional Industries for furniture in the EOC. And then the internal transfer to Fund 55, that is in the amount of $369,738.39, and that's made up of the $340,000 that you just approved in the budget amendment, plus we're closing down Fund 101, which was the emergency fund that was set up for the purpose of cleaning up after the tornado and also constructing the EOC based on the grant that was received. That's in the amount of $29,738.39. Then to Vulcan Materials Company, $16,405 for road ops materials. I'm sorry, that was $21,272. The $16,405 is to VFIS of Texas for volunteer fire department insurance premiums. Those are the bills we request the court to approve so that we can pay those checks today.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve payment, ratify paying of the bills.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut, second. Commissioner Berry, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much, Stan. Our next item is economic development. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a joint resolution of the City Council of the City of Granbury, Texas, and of the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas agreeing to renew the inter-local cooperation agreement for administration of the economic development programs and provide an effective date. Does, Warren, do you want to say anything about this before we read it?
I don't need you, Judge, unless you have any questions.
No, no, it's okay. Has all the commissioners had a chance to read the resolution? Do you have any comments about it?
Well, my only concern is I think all three of these items, A, B, and C, we really ought to take into executive session because it's impossible to untie them with the 381 agreement. I think they ought to be discussed there with our attorney present.
Okay, well, let's, let's...
That's just a suggestion.
Let's re, let's go, let's do this and let's move, let's table those items until we get down to the last of the, you know, the agenda, and then we'll, we'll take those up in executive session because we have to go into executive session for another item later on, item 10.
Yeah, for the 381 agreement, which involves the same thing.
Okay.
I don't see how you can separate the two.
All right, then the item number two on miscellaneous is consider and take appropriate action regarding nominations for the HCAD Board of Directors. Brian Thomas is willing to serve another term, but Mickey Sharon does not wish to serve again, so we need to either get two new ones or renominate Brian and another guy. Does it, does anybody have any recommendations and nominations for the HCAD Board of Directors?
I would like to nominate Brian Thomas.
Anybody else have any recommendations for that, or nomination seats for that one position? Okay, all in favor of Brian?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, but Brian Thomas is back on there. What about the empty position now? Anybody have a nomination for that?
Have you had any volunteers come forward?
I have not.
Mickey Sharon was on there, and he told me yesterday at the groundbreaking he wasn't interested in re being on there. The school has put two people for, I mean, the school, he's a school board member, so, you know, Greg's in the audience, but he has a JAG opinion that you can have a councilman, a court member, or a school board member of the taxing authority be represented on this board. But if anyone wants to volunteer to be nominated, that'd be great. If not, then, you know, we can open it up to anybody. It's, it's not an easy job. I mean, it's just somebody wants it, but...
Hey, Greg, would you come up here a minute, please? Just come to the, who, yeah, I'm gonna drag you in on this. Who is the school prep for their people?
Who are the board members to date?
Yeah.
Who are the board members to date?
Tony Smith, Walter Baldry, Terry Johnson, Mickey Sharon, Brian Thomas.
Brian.
Brian Thomas. The school has nominated one of their new, I forgot his name, but one of the new board members.
Joe Jones?
Who?
Was it Joe Jones?
Yes.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the Commissioners for that second position?
Well, I think we, we need to, to go along with the choice of the school board if that's who they've recommended.
Does anybody have any problems with that?
Member needs to come from.
So are you, are you nominating Joe?
I would, I would recommend Joe Jones.
All right, I have a nomination for Joe Jones. Any, any other nominations? All in favor of Joe Jones?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carried. So we have two that were recommended, Brian Thomas and Joe Jones. Thank you very much, Greg. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a request to roll over from this year's budget the donations to the animal control and dare donations because it was donated from citizens for specific projects and not budgeted. Sheriff's Office, who?
The sheriff's not here today, but what, Lynn can come up if he wants to, but we discussed this a little bit at the animal control meeting. In the past, we just have to encumber or make sure that the dare donations and the animal control donations are not put back in the general fund, and I believe that's what Lynn will discuss.
Exactly, it's the same thing.
So then I'll entertain a motion to roll these over into, into the next year's budget.
A live line item for Stan or Kathy to keep open so that it does not dissolve is what they're after.
These are donations that they in no way become part of the budgeted monies.
That be correct, Stan or Kathy?
Yes, I believe those are, as they are collected, they're already being deposited into a separate fund, and those funds do not go back to the general fund.
Okay, so they'll just be rolled over to be used during the next budget year?
Well, whenever.
Okay.
Whatever money, and then those funds, it's gonna be...
For those specific purposes.
Specific things and available for that purpose.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this roll over to, into animal control donations and the dare donations.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Lynn. Environmental health, consider and take appropriate action regarding citizens' collection station. Consider a new fee schedule for the citizens' collection station, and I guess item B is voucher system. Y'all want to take these together or separate? Together?
He says yes to cover them both.
Okay, James?
Judge Commissioners, you should have in your packet the proposed new fee schedule. I've spoken with a couple of Commissioners on this, and we discussed it in depth, and we looked at, after five years of operation, the fact that the fee schedule had not been updated, and of course, taking into consideration costs to the county and, and the amount of taxpayer dollars that's going toward hauling that waste off, I felt like it was time to go ahead and propose an updated fee schedule. Be happy to answer any questions related to that new schedule.
How long has this, we've been doing this, James?
July was five years, from '09 to '14.
There's probably been increases on the people charging us to haul the stuff off, right?
There has been. Our waste hauler, which is, was ISI, and then they changed to Progressive, the same company, has increased their fees over the years. When I calculated, it was some 15%.
But we have not.
We have not. We have not revisited the schedule.
We also have, have absorbed five years of increases for the employees it takes to man this station.
Right.
And have not had that ever reimbursed as well, so...
All your recyclables are still free. All you've done is gone up on the bulky items or the larger items, and the way I look at it, the way you broke it out, when you compared surrounding areas at Parker County and Sumreal County, we're still below what they charge.
Correct, yeah. When I did the comparison with, with those counties, for instance, Wise County, even this new fee schedule is about half of their cost, half of what citizens in their county would pay.
Okay, what do you, what do you want to say about the vouchers?
The voucher was, I asked him to put the voucher on because in the past, what's happened is we do have some 501(c)(3)'s or HOAs that call, and they have a spring cleanup, and they've asked to go out and be able to dump at a reduced rate or a free rate, and the court in the past has brought it to court. James does not have a way to track that. So what he's done is done a voucher system so that, as you see, the top will be filled out by the 501(c)(3)' president or chairperson, and then tear off the bottom. He would also have, know how many vouchers he'd given out, and they could be a different color or whatever, but you would have to have a voucher to be able to go out, and that way whoever's at the site would not have to take somebody's word for it. I've got, you know...
And yeah, the other thing, Commissioner, is that he can, through this, he can, and of course, those would be, this one that we have as the example says, Rolling Hills, but they could all be identified separately, and then we could have the HOAs...
Well, that's just an example, I believe.
Have the HOAs encourage people to combine loads and get larger loads rather than so many.
The same as he does with the hazardous waste, what he would do is, if you were doing one HOA, you'd tell them you're only gonna give them 10 vouchers, and they'd have to, you know, make a combined effort, so...
Right.
But I believe he can count on both hands the times we've actually approved for no one to pay for it. So it doesn't come up very often, but the problem he has is he has to track somebody down and get in a letter from their office.
Right.
That hasn't gone through court. It puts us in a precarious position. It puts him in a bad spot. So this would be a voucher system he could use and get ratified at court for a 501(c) or something that comes up and that, we've had him come up and ask, after the tornado, we had a few areas that we were doing it for one location. If we brought it to them, would you take it for us? And I think that's what this is about, James.
Right, yeah, I'm asking, just as Steve had said, we're approached often by HOAs that are having cleanups, and citizens even after those cleanup days, asking if, because they, they had to work where they didn't have the opportunity to participate in that individual time, they ask if they can bring their, their waste to our facility. And, and we've tried to accommodate over the years. It's been kind of an informal thing on my part, but I'd kind of like to formalize this and, and get it, you know, where it should be.
I think...
So I'm asking for your approval to, to have a voucher system and asking for you to give me the authority to allow individuals that are nonprofit, of course, with different organizations and HOAs to come in under the voucher system and deposit that waste without having to pay.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the new fee schedule and the voucher system.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, James. Discuss and take appropriate action to replace current metal halo lights, security lights located around the jail and impound lot and replace with LED lights. Commissioner, precinct three.
Okay, I'd spoken with Tim and Sheriff Deves. They brought this issue to me. They've got several lights out around the jail and the impound lot, and the lights currently are the metal halo light. The bulbs are rather expensive, and the ballasts are very expensive. They're starting to go out. And Tim had, has received some estimates to replace all of those bulbs with lower energy light bulbs, and, and the difference in price, it's about $22,000 to replace all those bulbs around the Sheriff's Office, bulbs and fixtures, so that they will all contain the low-energy light bulbs. He's only gotten one bid so far. Sheriff, sheriff sees it as a security issue because he wants the, everything lit up around the jail and around the impound lot, and so that what, what we're doing is looking to replace the existing bulbs and fixtures with more energy-efficient fixtures.
Do you have a cost on that, Commissioner?
It's approximately $22,700.
Do we have identified source of funding?
No.
Is he working with purchasing on getting the bids on this thing too?
Yes, they're...
She said no.
Oh, you're not, he has not talked to you at all? Okay.
Can we talk about this tomorrow afternoon at Fund 55, from 1:30 to 5:00? It was 1:30 to 5:00.
Okay, we're gonna table this, if that's okay. We'll table this to the Fund 55 meeting tomorrow, so everybody in favor of tabling this?
I'll make the motion, we table it.
All right.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Dever to table this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? This, motion carried. Discuss, take appropriate action in regards to working on a contract to house a limited number of Parker County inmates in the Hood County Jail. Are you gonna, Biff, are you gonna address this?
I can make usual comments. Parker County Sheriff's Office called about a week ago and had a, a temporary need to house five to 10 inmates down here in our jail, and they called. We did not have a contract, as we do with E. Rath in Somerville. So at present, the contract, as it is written, is with the county attorney's office and waiting for her approval to review that, so the sheriff and the jail captains came up with a $48 a day charge for any inmates that are, that are kept in here, and that would be on the contract. But like I said, that's still under review by the county attorney, so that's where we are at this point.
Okay.
I talked to the sheriff late yesterday afternoon, and I thought, I thought Lori was here earlier, but has she not gotten back to you or the sheriff for that?
As of last evening, or yesterday evening, when he left, it hadn't been finalized.
What he told me was, I know that Rhonda's here as well, and so is Biff, but he took the contract from E. Rath County and just struck out information and forwarded it back to the sheriff over there and let him know, but Rhonda, I mean, Lori has not approved that. So he said, he asks us to either know that he, you know, he's proceeding with that with five to 10 prisoners. We can either approve this on her approval, or we can table it and bring it back in two weeks.
I'd, I'd suggest that we approve it based on her approval, because they want to do it pretty quick.
It's, it's, as needed, is what he told me, is when they need it.
Correct. And I'm assuming that, because I haven't dealt with the county attorney, but it's going to mirror the agreements that we have with the other counties, so...
What he told me.
Pretty standard.
He just hasn't had time to look at it yet, is what.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve this contract, house a limited number of Parker County inmates as needed based on the approval of the county attorney.
Second.
I'll entertain...
Oh, I'm sorry, I, okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Motion made by Commissioner Rowan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Fire marshal, consider and authorize county judge to sign a memorandum of understanding with Somerville County for the use of a radio communication tower located in, at Chalk Mountain. That's not what it says, is it?
That sums it up real well. I have a memorandum of understanding with, between Hood County and Somerville County to access their tower on Chalk Mountain that's operated by Somerville County through their sheriff's department. This tower, I think, would, as we move forward with improving our radio system, would give us better access, especially in the Plexi area. I presented this to the Somerville County Court yesterday. They did approve it, and Judge Ford has signed that, and I'm just bringing it to this, to our court for consideration and request your signature.
Anybody have any questions with the fire marshal?
I think it's good pre-planning.
Is already gone by the county attorney?
Yes, sir.
I thought, I thought was, motion approved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rowan. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Consider and review and take appropriate action regarding the mobile medical units, the MMUs.
The mobile medical units are an asset that has been assigned to Hood County through the North Texas Trauma Regional Advisory Council. We received those back in March of 2009, when Hood County entered into an agreement to receive two of the mobile medical units, one command, control, and logistic unit, and one communications cache. Also, each of these three units has a supporting generator that comes with it. Since receipt of these units, there's, we've never had to actually deploy them in an emergency. Nor had they been requested for any type of deployment. They have been utilized approximately five times for training and public relation events. These units are good to have as far as they're self-control, or self-supporting, deployable shelter that can be used on any flat surface if needed. They're also a regional asset that can be used for, in case of a medical surge or a triage situation. Some of the problems that I have with them, though, our office is not able to provide a permanent team of members trained to use and deploy these units as required in the contract with the track. The people that we utilize to set them up are our first responders, and if we're having an emergency, they're already gonna be tied up, so I don't have people to get those out and use them. Maintenance costs, oil changes, for the generator units are approximately $800 per unit, so it'd be about $2,400 per year plus tire replacements on a rotation basis. Currently, the track has a reimbursement system, but you have to apply after you make your purchases, or you apply for it, make your purchase under county funds, and then wait for reimbursement if they're, if you're approved. There's also, if we were to deploy these, we have a situation where we would need a fuel delivery system to keep the generators running, which we do not have in place, so that could affect their operational integrity if you did deploy them. And last, and I think the biggest, is also our office doesn't have the equipment such as heavy-duty trucks to tow these large units. Also, if there's an incident going outside our county, we would have to affect other departments such as road operations to get trucks to pull them, and I think that could also hinder other departments such as road ops or the sheriff's department if we had to borrow vehicles to tow these off during an emergency incident. I would therefore like to ask the court to consider to sever this contract that we have with the track and return those items.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion based on the recommendation of the fire marshal, emergency management coordinator, to terminate the contract that relates to the mobile medical units and give the company 30-day notice of this, give a written notice of the termination.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Rowan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carried. Thank you, Ray. Consider and take appropriate action to approve contract for RFB 2014-008 for Pest Control Services Purchasing.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This RFB for Pest Control was issued on August the 9th. It was published in the Hood County News and on the Hood County website. Bids were opened in the purchasing department, which is considered a public place as required by local government code. We award these bids on the best value to the county. It doesn't always take into consideration just pricing. It can also take into consideration delivery, service with the county prior...
Response time.
Response time, you know, not delivery, but like how they service it, their, their quality. There were five respondents to this bid, and from those five respondents, there are two that are within $17 a month of each other. If we have one servicing of anything other than just spraying, we feel that one company will be just as inexpensive as the other. And we have history with both of these companies.
Which ones are you recommending?
I want to recommend WiseChem. We have had them in the past, in our opinion, and also the opinion of our Building and Grounds Department. They have done an excellent job. Not to say the other company hasn't done a good job, but we just felt like WiseChem kind of just takes it up a step and do an excellent job, so it's our recommendation that we go with WiseChem.
Are you doing an alternate or not?
I was gonna say, you...
Just the first?
No alternate?
No.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the purchasing department on this RFB 2014-008 for the Pest Control Services? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the proposal by Wise Chemical Pest Control Services for the county pest control services.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever to have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Rowan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the video surveillance in system in Annex 2, IT, and Commissioner Precinct 1.
Jackie's done a little investigating on this, and I'd like for him to continue investigating on this before we make a, make an action item on this and see what it's gonna cost and go from there.
Okay, so are you making a motion that we continue the investigation and get all the cost numbers and everything?
Yes.
We received this, I believe, Tuesday evening of last week, and we went out and did some, viewed the premises and, and took some notes, made some measurements and things, and we're just waiting for some quotes and numbers to come back, Judge. So, but we wanted to have those before we actually brought those forward to the court.
Okay.
Before a decision.
Okay, then I have a motion by Commissioner Dever to proceed with this project based on, and, and get the, all the cost figures. Is any, second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion?
I mean, you're just gonna table it basically until we get the numbers, is that what you're asking?
No, just proceed, just gave, just gave Jackie the authorization to proceed. It's not tabled, he'll bring it back to us later.
You got funding for this, or you're gonna encumber it this year's budget or next year's budget, or do you know?
I would assume that probably, given the dates of the courts, that would be, we'd be falling under, it would probably be a new budget item, Commissioner.
About a Fund 55?
Probably be, that would probably be a Fund 55, as this building does fall outside of the regular courts. The courts are the only place that I know of that we actually have a, a set fund for this.
Okay. Based on the discussions and the motions made, you'll proceed with finding out what the cost is and bring it back to the court?
I will.
Maybe present it tomorrow afternoon at the budget, if you have, have the numbers, but talk about it. Any further discussion, Commissioner?
No, I don't want to have that quick, but he might.
All right, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Convene into executive session per Texas Government Code 551.087, economic development to consider discuss 381 policy for economic development in Hood County. Okay? That we tabled, and that, that item was to, to develop a letter for the, to put in the file about a 381 agreement and a 380, so we are in support of, of talking to companies and clients about that.
I'll make a motion on Item 10, that we allow Commissioner Taut, who's an EDC board member, to work with the county attorney, to come up with a letter that mirrors basically what the cities does, that goes out and invites prospective businesses that the city and county or the county's portion is open to 380s, 381s, 312s, and then it would be distributed through the economic development office with Warren Ketterman or any real estate person that comes forward and asks for a copy as they're trying to get leads off the state website.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carried. The next items that we went into executive session were the, hold on a minute, let me get it, it's the joint resolution and the interlocal agreement and the agreement for administration of the economic development programs, and I will entertain a motion to table those until we can have further discussions with the EDC board.
And/or a combined workshop with the city and EDC.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Rowan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. It is now 10:53, and we're adjourned.